Okay, let's call this meeting together to order. The agenda. Counselor Cunningham?
So I will add in addition to the agenda under Council and Committee Reports, I will do a Division Five update, please.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, just an addition and then the minutes will have to be approved as presented with addition.
So if there's no further additions, I will move to approve the agenda as presented, as amended?
Discussions, all in favor? Anybody else? Is this a time where we add what we think we need? Mike?
Generally, yes.
Uh, yeah. Ah, I'll do it the next one. Any other additions?
Calls for motion?
Motion? Move, it's approved. Okay, all in favor?
Okay, so we're into the minutes, Mr. Reeve. On page three, which says page four of twenty, under number three, three point two, spelling on Stephen, it's actually Stephen Raymer. You might have to check the spelling on that one, Carolyn, but that's the only thing I saw. And as there's only a couple of us here that can actually approve the minutes, I will move the minutes with the correction. Stephen Raymer, R-A-Y-M-E-R, I think. But, yeah, it's not the way it's listed there. Yeah, I know, I know.
Appointments scheduled, no appointments scheduled. Is that, is that when somebody's coming in? Delegation, yeah.
It could also be a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah. Okay. We can just go to the next one, we don't need a motion. Infrastructure, roads, water, no report. Community service, community services. What does that all entail, Mike?
So broadly, the three, so the way that we have these around community service, corporate services, is the municipality is basically structured in three, three and a half different, call them branches. So you have corporate services, which is everything that you're dealing with in terms of finance, human resources, IT, safety, all that, that gambit. Infrastructure is dealing with anything like water, roads, solid waste, in that realm. And then community services is basically everything else. So you have economic development, you have cemeteries, you have ag services, protective services, planning and development, a number of functions like that. So what, the way that the agenda is structured is if there's business or decisions that need to be made in, within those areas, they're grouped into those on the, on the agenda. So basically, you'll deal with anything that's coming up from community services, once you've done that, then you move into corporate services, and so on. So it's really just the grouping.
Okay, so it's the same, it's the same as you break down on your budget, it's all broke down, like with the different, different areas?
Same, same idea.
So no reports, I'm gathering, just because we're new?
Basically, yeah. What we've done is we knew the org meeting was going to take a good chunk of the day. We've kept this agenda fair, well, I say fairly light, we've kept it light, because we knew we wouldn't be getting to it until around two o'clock, when it was scheduled. The, so the other difference that you'll see in this agenda from a normal one, is, you know, this is a regular council meeting, it is the normal type of meeting that you'll do as a council. This one here, the, the topic under Legislative Services, which is really the CAO area, is really just part of the orientation briefing and giving you a high-level view of some of the documents that the municipality has. And really, that high-level view is, hey, be aware, these things exist, right? And to go through there. In a normal one, you'd see, you'd see our requests for decisions coming forward, you'd see reports coming forward and stuff like that. So, for example, in our next meeting, when we don't have an organizational meeting to do first, you'll see business items coming forward, saying, you know, here's a decision council, what, or here's a topic council, what decision do you want to make, right? Some of the reports are accepted for information, there's not actually a decision that you need to do attached to them, it's awareness, that, those types of things. So that is, there is a little bit of an oddity about this one, just due to timing, it's the first one, everyone's getting in the flow, and really just a report on some of the orientation stuff. And then the, the closed session item, when we go into that, that's some of the briefing that I'll give you around some of the, some of the legal or intergovernmental relations topics that are, that are going right now. And again, it's for an awareness level. Pretty much all of this stuff we'll come back to in some way, shape, or form, either soon or throughout your term.
Thanks. Counselor Hopkins?
Through the Reeve, is, just wondering on, for Thursday, Friday, is that when we'll kind of see an organizational chart?
Yeah, so through, through the Reeve, to the Deputy Reeve, we have a, that orientation is more related to the county. So some of the stuff will be rehashed around, talking about the roles, stuff like that. You guys as, as council, or you focus council, will have the, you know, you'll get a glimpse into the corporate structure, right? So there'll be a portion of Thursday, Friday, where the managers come in, and it's not going to be long, because it's, again, awareness level at that point. And they'll say, you know, this is a function that exists at the county, right? Here's who we are, here's roughly what we do. Thursday, Friday, what we've, the way we structured that, the last, in the last orientation and the previous council was very enthusiastic about that structure, is Thursday, Friday is a lot about that awareness and stuff like that, when we get into the corporate functions. Over the next month and a half, in conjunction with the council, committee, the whole meetings, that's where you're going to see more information about the departments come forward. If we tried to do every department, you'd, you're, there's so much information coming at you that it's nice to break it down into bite-sized pieces, so you can digest them and actually see what, sort of what's happening, right? So when, you know, when infrastructure comes in, as an example, when some of those departments come in, you know, you're going to get, when water comes in, let's use that as an example, when utility services comes in, you're going to get, you know, ten minutes around, this is who we are, this is roughly what we do, here's some things we have to be cognizant of, and, you know, they're out, the next department's going to come in. In the next month and a half, they're going to come back to you for an extended period of time and just talk about utility services, give you an idea of how the water rates are broken down, how much of a tax subsidy is going into the rates, some of the, you know, legislation we have to follow, because there's mandatory testing we have to do five days a week, et cetera, right? So they get a bit more into it then. And that way, we're not trying to tell you, we're not trying to feed you the entire county in one sitting, because you, nobody would, history shows us, that's not a great way to, to remember the information, right? So we do try to, to break it down, in a way that, you know, that day, you learned about utility services and maybe one or two other things, and it's digestible.
Okay, thank you. We talked about corporate services, a little bit. So Legislative Services, this is where you're going to talk about introductions to documents and process, Mike?
Yes, so through, through Mr. Reeve, when we go into, into this, this is part of, if you look in the Municipal Government Act, the, there is an orientation that puts, it's section B, that has to be, it has to be done. This is checking that, checking a large part of that box. So going through, making council aware of key municipal plans and policies, budgeting and financial information, public participation, and any other topics prescribed by legislation. So as we go through here, again, the intent today is to go through at an awareness level, to give you, to give you some information, something you can take away, digest, think about, that sort of stuff. As a heads-up, unrelated to, to this specifically today, but there is, on Thursday, Friday, some of the questions that, that will be posing to councils, part of that orientation workshop, is around, you know, what are you here to do? What do you, what are your priorities, what are burning questions you have? Again, at, on those days, the timeframe doesn't really necessarily allow that we probably won't answer a bunch of those things, but it allows us to start answering those questions in those follow-up sessions, as well as to start saying, okay, well, if this is going to be a priority of council, what does that do internally for the workflow, what switches around to, to accommodate that? Those types of things start to flow from that. So there's, there's questions we're going to be posing, in that, in that realm. The, some of those will likely flow from some of the documents that we're going to touch on here. And again, time, time-wise, looking at an awareness level, it's not the, it's not the intent today to really, you know, I don't want to take you through every line item of the procedural bylaw, that's a session in to itself. So as you go through, there, there will be questions that come up, I'm sure, so by all means, as, as council does ask, and we'll, if they're quick, we can answer them today, if not, we'll, we will ensure that we get, we get an answer to them. So as we, as we go through, the, the first component of this, the strategic plan, so and I think as you, as, prior to this meeting, when you went through the Laserfish and saw that repository of documents and stuff like that, most of these documents are available on our website, but you have, you have a different way of accessing them through Laserfish as well, it's the same document, goes to the same, comes from the same place, and really, it's there. So the strategic plan is that overall guiding document, or that visionary document, of what do you want the county to be? And so, there's lots of different ways of going about it, but the initial one is, when we sit down and say, you know what, describe what Neale County is in twenty years, that's the vision, right? Is what do you want, you know, twenty years from now, what do you think the county looks like, and how do you want to bring that about, right? Yeah?
One of the things, one of the things that, that's fine and dandy, I mean, twenty years from now, but, I mean, one of the things that we got to look at, too, is how we want this county structured right away. Everyone got voted in here, not to continue on with the way the structure is, as, as it stands. That's the discussion we'll, we'll be having. Then we can get into this, I think we need to get that under control first, and then we can get into the twenty-year and, and whatever. One of the things that, that came up, you know, when you're talking to repairs, is that the, the municipal plan and stuff that you guys have worked on, isn't necessarily what we need, or what we're here to represent right now. So I think we need to talk about stuff like that, and, and it has to be talked about, like, now, because it will affect, it will affect how we go forward with some of this, some of these committees, and also how the structure of the county will, will look. That's just a, that's just a thought, that came from my divisions, too, and a few of you guys' area, but anybody else got a discussion on that, or a comment?
Yes, I agree.
I agree, why proceed on a plan that most of the people, or the people I, in my area, decided they didn't want a part of? Why are we proceeding? We have to get those thoughts and feelings to the front as well, not just, let's keep on going and then we'll change it later. That doesn't work, we're wasting money. For instance, you've got to plan out ahead to get a economic plan for that, or you can get it. I think you talk across this whole county, and if we'd have been allowed to have a referendum, to decide whether the people want it, you would have had the information to make that decision more valid. We, we ignored that referendum, now we're sitting with another plan, another study, in a direction that we don't want to go. I think we have to be proactive.
Comments? Other comments? Counselor Hopkins?
Just looking at the document here, it says, council will have the opportunity early in this term to review the plan and preserve, amend, or update. I guess my question to the Reeve is, how soon do you want to review that plan?
Well, one of the things, one of the things that I was, one of the comments I have, is, I mean, the sooner the better that we can get on, onto this, where we can get a direction of what the, I, I believe we need to get control of, of what's happening in this county right now. And I'm talking, I'm talking everything from the top-down. There's stuff that's happened, we can't, as, as a elected official, I don't think there's room for another four years of continuing on with the direction that we're on right now, or the direction that's been going for the last twenty years. I mean, there's, there's, there's lots of concerns out there, and it's, like I said, we have to look at everything from the top-down, and, and that is our job. And so that, that, that's a decision that we have to sit and, and make as, as a council, prior, so we can give some sort of a direction, or makes, or execute some sort of a plan. Other comments?
Change is imminent, and if we don't change, we're not reacting to the times and the conditions that are out there. Since a lot of these plans were put forward, economically, the whole country has changed. I believe, and I believe your job, Mike, as a person that advises us, is to make people aware that there is situations have changed, we have to react to this stuff. If we're not, we're just going down the same hole. And I refuse to be part of a hole that, you know, open your eyes, see what's going on, that's all I ask.
Counselor Olson?
So we're deciding, basically, to continue the Neale County strategic plan, is that?
I don't think so.
No?
No, I, that was comments, that I said, the strategic plan is a twenty-year plan, right? My, my concern is, is we don't need to look at the twenty-year plan right now, we have to look at what, how this county is set up right now, is structured. I actually think we need to restructure, right from the top-down, and going forward. And how that looks, that'll be, depend on, on us, right? And I think we need to come up with some sort of a, 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 a plan on that. Then we, once we get everything where we think we need to be, then we start looking at long-term. We, but right now, we need to look at, right now, what's happened here at the county, how, how, right from the top-down, right from administration, right down to the bottom, we need to, we need to look at that, how it's structured and stuff.
Do you want to do that today?
No, 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 I'm just saying, we got to get into that. But a lot of that, if, if, if everybody's going to be going that way, a lot of that will change on how we do a lot of other things. Any other comments?
The reason I, I feel very strongly about this, I have had input, I've had very good council, people with the MV come to me with problems. I agree, here on, the meeting on, or the orientation, I'm not allowed to talk to them, they're not allowed to talk to me. They came to the water resources, or came, they had a water line, the gas company, same line, they came to me and said, we got a problem, we're going to go down and we're going to bore this down deeper. Hmm, that's really smart. It's already washed eight to ten feet in one year. I said, whoa, why do you want to spend money like that? We'll put, do this. He took, I said, you get me a piece of used culvert, and your problem will be stopped. It was done. They brought me, they didn't bring me the right size, I had to get my own culvert, because you put a smaller culvert down from a bigger culvert, you got a problem. But they at least listened, if you shut down that kind of communication, they would have spent $200,000 of that coolie, boring, doing all these things. You got to open up the, the communication, I heard all day on money, how, how important communication is, and then we shut down that communication? I don't think that's a very, very good council, or a plan for any success in any community, or any government.
Okay. Any other discussions? Okay, you want to continue, Mike?
Okay. The next document is the governance model, that also was included in the printout package that you have there. This one is basically a, a guide, a clarity tool for the public, for council, for administration, in terms of the roles that each party plays, what they're responsible for, what they're not, how do things get on the agenda? If you're a member of council, how do you deal with a concern? How do you get on to, how do you get an item on the agenda? Those types of, those types of questions, those types of things are covered in the, in the governance model. It's also parts in there that say, what is the purpose of a council meeting, versus what is committee of the whole used for? Items like that. The, there is a section in there around, if you find yourself as a chair of a meeting, so whether it's the Reeve's council, the Deputy Reeve's committee of the whole, whether it's ASB, MPC, whatever, there, there's guides in there around what is, you know, some of the tips, or how to go about chairing that, to encourage the, the dialogue from the, the group. So whether that's, again, council, ASB, or whomever. The, so the governance model is the, is really that, that information, and, and that guide for, for everybody that is associated with municipality and the public, as to what makes the county, what makes it move forward, what is the process for, for doing that? The intermunicipal collaboration frameworks, there are, I, we've talked about the ICFs, we just, in terms of the org meeting we just had, we appointed those, I think, rather than going into large part through that. Are there any questions around the ICFs? Because we sort of covered that material in the org meeting. Okay. The municipal development plan, so this is a mandatory document. The municipal development plan is a high-level planning document, it says, what is the, what does planning look like at, at Neale County? Again, municipalities are required to have one of these, the county updated ours just recently, and that was through a, we had a engagement process attached to that, so we had working groups that had members of large on it. I'm sure, I know a number of people in this room also attended the, the information sessions and the, the feedback sessions we had in Chosu and Akmi as part of the development of this plan, in terms of taking feedback from the, from the residents, and from the working group, and, and putting that into some of those, some of the, the sections within the, within the MDP. So your planning documents will essentially flow from very, very high level and very broad, and they'll flow down into the very specific. So when you're looking at the municipal development plan, it's very high level. If you're looking at some of the other things, like an area structure plan, that again, is a bit more specific, but very high-level, localized to, to an area. So you flow down, you get into the land use bylaw, where the land use bylaw in and of itself is really the nuts and bolts of how does development occur within the county. And so that, you know, there'll be more coming on that in those, in those larger sessions, but that's the, that's the MDP. Any questions on that one? No? The land use bylaw, and so I just referenced this, so the land use bylaw is, is one of the main planning documents that's in use, so whenever we have a development application, the land use bylaw is a primary document against which that, that application is, is compared. So in determining whether that application's going to be approved or not, the, the land use bylaw does break the, break, organize, however you want to phrase it, does move the municipality into different districts, so you, whether you call them district zones, whatever word that you want to apply to it. So you'll likely be familiar, we have, say, an agricultural zone, or a hamlet residential zone, or, there's a bunch of different ones there. Reeve McCook?
When was that last, when did we last go over that bylaw, or get that bylaw updated?
Do you want to know when, when it's last done, or when it's slated for review?
Slated for review, let's go that way.
You're starting right away.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So that, that's been on, that's, that review internally, or getting that prepped, is actually already started. One of the things that, that council's going to have to make a decision on here coming up, is what kind of engagement process you want attached to that review. So that, that's, that's forthcoming.
Is there, is there, if we want to add anything, or prior to that bylaw or meeting, do we have, is there an agenda that we have to add, add something prior to? If we wanted to add, or make sure something gets talked about?
The, I think there's, I guess, through, to you, Reeve McCook, there's, I think the short answer's going to be yes. How that occurs, we don't think we've sorted that out yet, but, you know, will it occur, is there other topics that are priority in there for, for council to look at as part of the land use bylaw? Somewhere in there, that opportunity will exist. Intermunicipal development plans, again, we've talked about those, I don't want to, unless there's questions, I think I'm going to move, move past, if nobody stops me, okay? Area structure plans, I referenced those, so ASPs, so these provide more detailed planning related to a specific area, these are generally done for larger scale, you know, I put neighborhoods in, in brackets there. The, so this isn't, somebody wants to come in and they want to develop a, a site for a trucking company, and they want to subdivide and have an industrial zone parcel for their trucking company. That's not where an ASP comes in. An ASP comes in, if they're like, coming in, saying, you know what, I've got a quarter section, or a section, half a section, whatever, and I want to turn this into an industrial, a large industrial development, then we're likely looking at an ASP, as to what does this whole thing look like, right? What, what uses go on in there, that type of thing. The county has The county has, has a few of these out there right now. So for example, Saddleup Estates is governed by an area structure plan, Crocus Coolie Estates, which is south of town here and has never been, there's nothing there, that, that has an approved ASP in place, as does Badlands Motorsport Resort, which is of course in the, in the south, south border of the county. So those are all governed by, by area structure plans. Pavement condition assessment and road studies, so again, these are standard plans that we look at for infrastructure renewal. What these really do is take stock of what, what's out there, what condition they're in, and they start to paint the picture for what's coming down the road, so to speak. I mean to phrase it like that, but they're looking at, you know, trying to, putting in place that, so we can forecast when certain infrastructure, particularly in this case roads, is going to need to be replaced, rehabilitated, or whatever the case may be, and start putting that, that, that planning into place, start putting the financial forecasts into place to do, to do that type of work. Reeve McCook?
Who does that? Engineering firm or in-house?
So that, that's usually done, that's usually done externally.
Okay.
The, again, I'll lump the Lagoon Study and the Swallow Torrington Utility Master Plans into the same thing. They're really the same thing as what I just talked about, except they're focusing on different types of infrastructure, so whether that's, that's pipes, other things like that. So as you get into, into those realms, that may include things like cambering the line, seeing what condition they're in, and then trying to, again, forecast when they're, when they might be up for replacement and using, using that data, whether it's, whether it's records of breaks or anything like that, that we tie that in. And really what it's intended to do is give us a current condition report of the infrastructure, and then to start to put a plan into place, which really, I say a plan, but really a forecast of when, when those costs are going to be coming up, you know? How much, you know, if we're looking at, do we need to replace a length of pipe in Torrington? What's the rough cost on that, and when do we anticipate it's going to be due? So that we're not, we're not leaving it so far that it, that it breaks, but we're also not trying to replace it ahead of, ahead of when it maybe makes sense to do so. So again, those are aimed at, those long-term forecasting and, and driving those decisions on a, on a data perspective. Clear? Okay. Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan is a master plan that was adopted, adopted by council, and so it sets the overall vision and plan for Horseshoe Canyon. It outlines the county's efforts to, or what we're looking at as a way of monetizing or creating benefit out of the, out of the canyon. So the, it does outline the overall vision and the strategies and actions associated with that plan. And again, there's things outlined in there that become forecasted items. And for council's reference, when I say forecasted items, forecast is a forecast, it's not an approval. So when you do look at, at budget information coming up, and I'll touch on this shortly in this same presentation, the, even as a budget, for an example, you approve the current year, but there's forecasts for years beyond that. The forecasts are not approvals. Those are just a heads-up of what's potentially coming and what, what's there. So you take the data from, from these plans, from the infrastructure plans, from the, the road report, and, you know, from our bridge inspections, all that stuff, and you start feeding it into the forecast, so that you have an idea of not just what you're dealing with financially today, but what's potentially coming. Right? Each of those, once they flow into the current year, become the current budget, which is councils to, to look at, amend, approve, et cetera. Reeve McCook?
With all these master plans and stuff like that, this is what I'm talking about, guys, about need to discuss, discuss now or soon, so we're not involved in it, like for five more years, ten more years. We need, we need to make decisions on, on this stuff, whether we even want to be, have it. That, that's a tough decision that's got to be here. We don't need to follow, I shouldn't say we don't need to follow, but this, this is, that's what, this, this stuff was the prior council's plans, not this council. So we have to make sure we're, we're on board with each other and know what we're doing. I mean, I don't believe that we need to be looking at a, depending on how you guys thought, but I mean, this is one of the biggest, the biggest concerns that all the rate pairs had. Whether Horseshoe Canyon is or isn't within the county, or what we're going to do with it.
Being a representative of that area, maybe you need, it's not me, but the people that's probably going to be closest to the, they're not supporting it.
No, this was, this was, one of the things is, is, and I know, I'm not sure, Mike, how we're going to do this, but I mean, we need to sit and talk about this, and we need to be blunt about what, and that's probably Thursday, Friday?
This, so one of, I guess what it says, you know, a large-scale discussion about this on Thursday, Friday? No. Thursday to Friday, Thursday, Friday is an internal orientation as part of that process. It's not actually a formal meeting where council conducts business. But what will happen on Thursday, Friday is if you say that discussion of Horseshoe Canyon is a priority for this council, then we take that away and say, okay, they've told us it's a priority. When does it come back? How does it get back into, in front of council at a business meeting, I'll call it, a regular council meeting? And that's what we're, that's feedback that we're going to be looking for on Thursday, Friday, is if you're saying, hey, this is a priority, then we say, okay, we got to get it back relatively soon. The previous council did direct that a specific orientation session on Horseshoe Canyon be, be done as part of the orientation process that we're going through here, so that is on top as well.
One of the things I'm going to say is, very disappointed in the prior council, especially getting this close to, to an election time, that they've decided how or what we're going to do. Or what we're going to look at. Very disappointed in that. That's not even professional.
I guess the only comment that I'd make is when I look at this, and I look at what we need to cover in November, it looks like this is something that we're going to be looking at on December the second. Should we Thursday and Friday decide that we want to bump it up, we're going to have to figure out.
Exactly.
Where we bump it up into November without interfering with, I, what I'm assuming would be?
I think we get our priorities straight, is like you're saying, that's what we want to do, and, and the sooner the better. Like I say, we can't go another four years with this. This is just thinking it works.
I don't disagree.
Counselor Olson?
So yeah, a lot of this stuff is pre-planned as to what we're doing for the next few days, but is there a chance to add, you know, more than just verbalizing what we, we think as to coming up with a sooner strategy meeting with the council? Is that something we can add into the schedule, or is, do we have to have that table for so many months down the road?
Well, one of the things, one of the things I'm sitting here listening to, and I mean, this, this is hard for me, because I've been involved in a lot of council stuff. It's almost like we're being dictated to, on what we're going to be involved in, and that's not this council's, this new council's direction so far. Now, if you guys agree that this is what, this is something you want to discuss, that's what we discuss and that's what we do, right? But, I mean, a lot of this stuff was prior from the, from the council before, and, and when I, when I look, even at the minutes, and how staff and administration tried to bring in, like, pre-approved budgets prior to an election, criminal in my books. That's, that's just not right. So this here is stuff that you guys, we, or not you guys, we have to decide. And Thursday, Friday is what Mike is saying, we'll, we'll sit there and say, this is what we got to get on, and we got to get on. And that's the priority. But to sit here and go, like, hopefully we're not getting stonewalled, like, I mean, some of this stuff has to be addressed right away, especially some of the concerns I, I know all of you guys got, and I got some. I think our, our immediate attention should be on, on this stuff that we, we talked about for, from the election, and what, what needs to be done, and how we, how we structure it. That's just a comment. Okay, Mike?
Okay. The, now, for clarity, the intent of this is to start giving the orientation processes, start giving a council an idea of what is, that these things exist, what functions a municipality does, so that this council applies those priorities and applies what you heard from the rate pairs, there's also an understanding of what it is that you're looking to change. There's always changes with a new council, whenever every election, there's different priorities that shift, anything like that. But the orientation process is set up to start giving a base, a base knowledge or awareness of what, what currently exists, to give that information or that digestibility so the council can move from there to in, to stating its priorities, and then looking at how those priorities come forward, as well as to basically look at building those into administration's work plans. So there is the day-to-day thing there, as you get into some of those other topics as an example. So, you know, you talk about the county's structure. Council doesn't actually talk about the county's structure, council talks about the service levels. The service levels dictate the structure. So if there's services that the county's currently providing that you don't think we should be, that's, that's, that's council's wheelhouse. If there's services we're not providing that you think we should be, that's council's, that's council's domain, and there, our job is, as admin, is to say, if you want to do a thing or not do a thing, to tell you what the impacts of that would be, or what that's going to take, or, or what that's going to change. And then you decide from there if you want to proceed with, with those, those outcomes, right? Yes?
Well, one of the things I'll just, I'll, I'll go with you on that, on some of it, but don't get, don't get fooled here, and don't, and don't get pushed away from the direction that we want. We need to set the direction. And we need to set how it's going to be. The administration can either work with us or fight, fight us, it doesn't matter which way. If that happens, I guess there's some decisions we have to make. So I'm just going to leave that with you. Any other comments on that? Counselor, can you?
If I remember correctly, when we did our, kind of the orientation four years ago, that's kind of what we chatted about a lot, if I remember, Mr. Hogan, is, I think we all ran around the table and we kind of said what our priorities were and, and what we heard, like you said, during the election, and, and that kind of helped drive the bus forward, if I'm remembering correctly, so that's why I think Thursday and Friday is such a, such a beneficial couple of days, because then we, we really can communicate what we did here during the election and what we do see for the next four years and beyond going forward.
By all means, I agree.
I believe that's why we were elected, and at least I feel that's why I was elected, to open up that can of worms and address the issues. There's a lot of, a lot of issues, we all know it. I'm here to, to open up that conversation anytime.
It's like Mike said, Thursday, Friday is the day, so, and I mean, that's, like, for, for God's sakes, don't be scared to say something, because that's where we got to get it out on the table and get, and find a way to, to get it, to get it solved, and, and the direction pushed through. Hey, Mike?
Good there? Good there?
Any other concerns? Good? I'm good.
Okay. The economic development plan, so again, this was really taking a look at the, the county's economic development initiatives. For a large part, the, for a large portion of the county's history, there hasn't been a formal economic development approach, or I'm going to say an intentionality around it. A number of years ago, that changed, and the county wanted to take a more intentional approach to fostering economic development in the county. They did that for a number of reasons. One was wanting to ensure that, to provide support, ensure that this was a healthy business environment for local and existing businesses, but as well to attract new development and new businesses to the county as a way of expanding the, the tax base, as a way of providing jobs for, people aren't going to live here if there aren't, if there aren't jobs or things for them to do, or if there aren't services for them to, to make use of. So around the, that whole gambit of, I'm going to say what it is that we're trying to, to make the county, what we're trying to make it for people today, as well as their, their kids and other people of tomorrow, around to, to ensure that we are a viable and sustainable community, is council wanted to increase the intentionality of its economic development initiatives. One of the things that was identified, and where this three-year plan really comes in, is looking at the foundational elements of, of that. So what is the county's investment readiness? For a large part, the county's investment readiness has been low, so looking to increase that to, to make us more attractive for, for businesses to locate here, for local businesses to expand, all of those, all those types of things. So that's a very short version of saying, really, we're aimed at investment readiness and, so that we can go out and start doing that attraction, because it's not, in the past, that's not something that the county has been highly intentional about. So the economic development plan outlines the, what those goals are, what we're trying to put in place, and so that we're ready to take the next step once those things are done. Key policies, so obviously there's a lot, there's a number, there's a greater number of policies than what I've outlined here. These are some of the key ones. I believe in the, in the, just before the meeting, when Ms. Vandercoo took you through the, the laser fish, and you saw the policy repository and all that, there's lots of things out there. So as an example, we have, you know, it's one of the ones later on the list, council grant programs. I heard the comment earlier in the day that the county needs mechanisms for determining who we give money to and who we don't. The county has those for most areas. There's always some areas we don't, one-offs that come up, that sort of thing, but in large part, a lot of that, we have policies that govern that, and those are council's policies. Let's say, if we get this type of request, here's how we assess it, or here's who makes the decision on it, those sorts of things. And there's, there's a balance in those. Reeve McCook?
How is it that, on these policies and everything that's set up by prior councils, how is it that we, if something comes up right away, how can we, how fast does this occur, and can we, or, or can we change a policy that represents this council rather than the prior council?
So there's, there's two components there. So the policies are council, they can be changed by resolution. So the, the short answer is, can this council change policies? Yes. In fact, that's, developing policy is council's primary function. That's, that's your main job, actually, is looking at the policies and providing governance to, to the organization. In terms of the existing policies, they are yours. They're not the previous councils or the councils before that. Council is a continuing body, so all of the policies, bylaws, agreements, all of those things that existed the day before you got elected are still in place the day after you get elected. And that's going back to those days, none of that stuff stops, none of that stuff is, you know, the municipality doesn't lose all its bylaws because of the election. Those things continue on. And, and so as you go through, and you say, we look at the policy review schedule as an example, if there are policies in there, you say, that one's a higher priority to us, then what you're telling us is that you want to review that one sooner rather than later. There's a number of policies, you're not going to get through them all in the first month or two, but as you go through, if there are ones that are higher priorities to you than others, once you feed that information to us, then we move those up in the schedule to reflect that, that priority.
And that would be at, you bring that forth on, on the agenda at a council meeting?
Through, there's more, there's different way, different processes that can be used. So on some of them, they might come forward at a council meeting, more, the more, the practice more so has been to bring them forward at committee of the whole. And that way, they get a, they get a discussion, if there's questions, they're, well, which way do you want to go? As well as, you know, some of the policies, I'll say it this way, are fairly straightforward. They're, they're governing, I'll call it little, easy things. Some of the policies are a lot more complex, and so one of the things about bringing it forward at the committee of the whole is that you can take a look at, and you say, well, jeez, if we thought about going this direction, you know, what would that cost? Or what additional information would we need to make that decision, et cetera, et cetera? And you send us back as admin to go put that together, right? Those sorts of things. And we bring that information back to you, and you, you use that to make your decision, right? So in large part, we've brought, we've more, most often than not, we've brought the, we've brought drafts to committee of the whole, or if there's some of those directions that we're saying, okay, like I said before, if you want to go direction A, or if you want to go direction B, let us know so that we can start. We're not spending a lot of time and effort going down path A when you already know you want to go down path B, right? So that's, that's another function that we tend to do at committee of the whole, before we even start drafting a policy for your review, again, for those more complex ones, right? Some of them, like I said, you've got some out there that, that are, you know, they're a bit more meaty, you've got some in there that are, like our letters of support policy. We get, we get requests regularly from community groups that are applying for grants through the province or Rotary or whoever else, right? And they need a letter of support from the local municipality. So what the county has done is we've got a letter of support policy that exists and is in place, and what it says is if the policy, or if the request meets A, B, and C, as a CAO, I can just write the letter and we can send it off. And that way, the group's not waiting for the next council meeting, they're not there, right? And so council's laid out those parameters, and they said, if it meets this, this, and this, just get it done, right? If it doesn't meet these things, then you got to bring it back to us for a decision, right? That's the gist of that entire policy. So that one- So that one there is put in place as, as really more of an efficiency tool and a service tool because again, what tends to happen is these groups, they come in and say, we need this letter of support. And we say, great, when do you need it for? Like day after tomorrow. Okay. Well, we're two weeks away from a council meeting. And so having a policy like this in place says, okay, does it meet A, B, and C? It does. Here's your letter, right? And away they go. Uh, but again, that A, B, and C as part of that policy review is determined by council. So that, um, so really it depends on, on, on those. So again, not everything's in here. Um, I'd encourage you to go through the, the municipal policies, see what's there, uh, because there is, there's a fair number of them. The first one on the list here, the public participation policy. Uh, so again, this is one that, uh, again, if you guys uphold the priority or not, it's up to you, but this is one that, uh, we were asked to bring back sooner rather than later. That is again, the policy that governs how the county does public engagement and that's really at a, at a high level. So again, it's based on IEP two principles, which is the International Association for Public Participation. That's probably the most, uh, the most common or the, the number one used, um, by municipalities in, well, almost everywhere, but there is a, they're founded on that and that outlines a matrix that when we're doing individual things that we can tie back to. So that policy doesn't say for this little project, do this or for that one, do that. It says, here's your framework. And then as those projects come up, it's determined what level of engagement is going to take place in there. Uh, I mentioned the land use bylaw review coming up as an example. Council's going to have that decision of how far you want to go with that engagement, what you want that engagement to achieve, uh, what you're willing to put into it. Because there's, you know, when we went into, when we did the MDP as an example, uh, there was a cost to hosting those working groups. There was a cost to renting the halls for those public, um, for the public engagement sessions, right? So all those things, when we come back on that, um, you know, there's decisions that, that, uh, that council makes as, as part of those processes. The procedural bylaw, um, technically not a policy, but a bylaw is again, how do meetings at the county, what are the minutia of how they work? How does, uh, the, how do these things go? The procedural bylaw is one that is in need of review. Uh, there's a number of outdated portions of it as well as now that the province has removed the FOIPAC and replaced it with the, the Access to Information Act. Um, as an example, the old, the policy, it doesn't change the spirit or intent of the bylaw, but the bylaw still references FOIP. Um, so there's a few things like that. So that's a policy that is, is in need of, uh, is in need of coming back in review. Uh, but it's also one of the, one of the ones that we gave, uh, a copy of or a physical copy of it that was in your packages when you, when you came in today. The CAO bylaw, this is a bylaw every municipality is required to have, basically establishes the CAO position and what they've, uh, what they're doing. So again, at a high level, most of that's drawn from the MGA, uh, but that is a bylaw that every municipality is required to have. Uh, transportation, greater service, a greater gravel services policy. Uh, this is one that, uh, that council wanted brought back to, to look at. Uh, we've brought, we're, so it is one of the ones that currently is on our list to bring back sooner rather than later. When I talked about council's role of establishing service levels, that's what this policy is. And so basically says, here's the service level for, you know, how often or what our goals are when we're grading the roads or when we're plowing in the winter or those types of, those types of functions. So that is one of the other main functions of, of policies, not just this one, is setting what are some of these service levels that are being, that are being offered? Or what is the, what is it that we're attempting to, to achieve? So that is, that's that policy. Um, it is slated to come back sooner rather than later. So again, um, if that is still council's direction, then that's, that's what you'll see. Council grant programs I already touched on. Um, so just to add to the, to what I've already said, the council grant programs are those ones that outline how are we determining who we give money to, for what purposes are we giving that money? Um, again, they do not cover a hundred percent of the requests that we get, uh, but a lot of them are in there. And so when you look at that, those are the ones that say like the hall, the, the funding that we give to community halls. Uh, if a hall has a capital program or a capital work that they want to do, uh, what is the application process? What are they, what will we fund? What will we not? Um, there's a bunch of others that are like that.
Are these capital grants, are they, are they, is that money from the provincial government or is that money is out of our, our pocket?
That's, that's money from the county. So there is a budget line in there for community grants that, uh, that you'll see in budget and that is, that's what's funding these policies. So those, those, everything from, uh, hall capital grants to the, uh, the Neheal County Scholarship that we give out two of them to graduating students a year. Uh, so there's our, and there's a number of things in between those. So those are all governed by policy. Uh, whereas I, council correspondence. So again, this is again, a very common one. Pretty much every municipality has these. Uh, what's important for council to know here is the, the policy essentially says when mail comes into the county, it is county mail and it might be addressed to, uh, council, it might be addressed to that. Basically it's county mail. It gets, unless it's marked private and confidential, it gets opened and then what we do with it from there, uh, is what we do with it from there. If it's say a letter to council from a rate pair, that you'll see that show up in council correspondence, which goes to you. If it's a letter saying something like, hey, you got this stip funding, um, council generally sees a copy of those, but really that's just for notice and for file, right? There's not a decision to be made about that by this, by this group. It's a, it's a notice one. Um, we get information bulletins, stuff like that. So again, that's council correspondence and what that outlines there. And you'll start seeing in your, now that you're set up on email, um, once a week, you'll see a package come out with literally titled council correspondence. And it comes out and it's those, those letters and things like that that we receive. Um, if there's anything in there that you want elevated to the council agenda, you have to let us know. Cause if we're putting in the council correspondence, it's basically this is for your information. There's nothing we really need to do with this. If you see something in there and say, well, we need to do something with this, then let me know. The council compensation and expense reimbursement. So again, this is the policy that governs how, what, uh, how council is compensated and what you're compensated for. Uh, traditional practice at the county has been to do this at the end of the term. And the reason for doing that at the end of the term and making it effective for the term prior is that the people reviewing what council get, get paid are not necessarily the people who are going to be. So you're not doing it for yourselves, so to speak, if that, if that makes sense. Um, you've got, and so at the end of your term, you can expect the same process to come forward or this policy to come forward. So you can take a look at and say, you know, given the job that we do, um, how we compare to other municipalities, the other factors you decide, then you're setting that up for the council in comings, um, so that there's not that, there's not necessarily that self-interest component of it. The reserves policy is another one that, uh, that we, we need to bring back. Uh, the reserves policy, as it says, is really the policy that sets up the county's reserves. So the reserve funds are those that we're not using for the, they're not, say in the day-to-day bank account. They're the ones that have, you know, you've probably seen in the, if you've looked through the financial statements, there's a number of different reserves there, like a roads reserve, a gravel reserve, emergency reserve.
Just saying quickly, so.
Okay.
Your agenda?
Okay.[1080.91]
We're back in council at 3:08. Mike, you want to continue?
Yeah, I think we were in the midst of the reserves policy. So again, this is the policy that establishes and handles how the county's reserves are structured, what their purposes are, things like that. This is an older policy. It too is in need of review and update. But basically, that's, that's its intent, is to establish reserves, indicate how they work, what their purpose is, those sorts of, those sorts of functions. The, the reserves themselves, as we talk about them, they are those, they're basically what is, what is put, what the county puts away for future uses or for specific purposes. As an indication, all of the county's capital projects, so our road projects, our bridge replacements, our utility replacements, all of those are funded from reserves. So there's, there's a number of other ones that exist for various purposes. When we get further into the, into the orientation, we'll go through what those are and what they, what they look like. Purchasing and procurement is the policy that indicates, or states out, lays out how purchase, well, as it says, purchasing and procurement is done, is done at the county. So when do, when, when is sole sourcing allowed versus when are three, three quotes required? The policy is written to be in alignment with the New West Partnership Trade Agreement, which is a free trade agreement among a number of Canada's provinces, which puts legislated requirements on entities like municipalities to, to do things a certain way. So as an example, if we're procuring a, a goods that are above a certain level, I think it's about seventy-five, eighty thousand, or capital, things worth, and I believe that's about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is a threshold there, we by law have to advertise that publicly on a national, say like a bids and tenders, or that type of thing. So there are, there are laws above us that dictate how we do some of this. As well, there's different purchasing, purchasing laws and things like that that come into play. But the purchasing and procurement is basically, this is how Neill County goes, goes about this. Signing authority policy is again, really the policy that outlines who can sign what. So this is the delegation from council around how are we, when there's things that come into the county, who needs, who has the authority to sign off on those. So when you go through the Municipal Government Act, there's a number of powers that, that the council has, there's a number of powers that the CAO has. Council's powers, and actually the CAO's to a point, can be delegated by those entities as well to a point. There's some powers that you have as council that you cannot delegate. For example, the power to pass bylaws, you cannot delegate that power. You cannot delegate, so there's, but other things you can. Signing authority policy is really one aimed at, at efficiency, around who can sign off on these things, so that they're not spending time, effort, and money bringing them back to, to council for what should be, there's not a lot of decision involved in it, as if you're going to do the thing, this other thing needs to happen. So there are, that's the signing authority policy, as you go through it, you get a gist of what, what authorities that the different individuals have, that when we have some of these agreements, or some of the, you know, we, we enter into a contract to replace a piece of equipment, as an example. The replacement of the equipment has already been approved by council, you know, who signs off on the PO for that? Right? That's, the signing authority covers that off. So again, it's aimed at what efficiencies do we, do we create to make the, the processes of the county happen? Key projects and items. So as we go through here, these, now, the first, I would say the first, three of the first four of these are really things that the county is maybe not necessarily directly involved in, but has a, an interest in. Are there topics that you're going to see come back again and again? So the assessment model review, we call AMR, is when you look at the different property types that are out there, they have different ways of assessing them. So as an example, on, if you have an acreage, and actually, the first three acres of your farm are assessed on a market value. So that is, that's market value assessment. So if in, I live here in Three Hills, if other houses that are like mine sell at a range, what should I, you know, what does a market say my house is worth? That's a market value assessment. And then you have types of regulated assessment. So anything like machinery, equipment, linear, things like that are regulated forms of assessment, they're done on a cost basis. So that's a different way of determining what that value is, so that the companies or the owners of those facilities have a value and the tax rate is applied to that value. Farmland is another type of regulated assessment. So the, the value of a, if we're talking, let's make it easy and use a bare quarter section, farmland is not assessed on market value. So we'd have to go back and pull the stats, but I believe the average quarter section in the county, from, from an assessment perspective, is about forty thousand dollars. So that's what the tax rate is based on, or what the, what the tax rate is applied to, is that, that forty thousand. So under the assessment model review, what they're really looking at is regulated assessment, not including farmland. So they're really looking at the, the oil and gas, telecommunications, pipelines, there's other, I said telecommunications, rail lines as an example. So they're looking at how that assessment is done. The vast majority of the county's revenue comes from that type of assessment. So that, if they start moving that assessment around, and that impacts the, the assessment base for the county, that has an impact on the county's revenues. And so that's, that's a topic that us and pretty much every other municipality is watching, to see what the outcome of that, of that is. To give an example of that, in 2019, the, yeah, we were basically summoned to the legislature, Reeve and I were, on, I think it was three days' notice, something like that?
Three days, Friday?
Yeah. So where the, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and the Minister of Energy met with us and fourteen other municipalities and said, here's what we're doing. And so the, what they did there on that day, the program they put in place is they, they arbitrarily modified the assessment for shallow gas facilities. And so they, they applied a thirty-five percent reduction, just arbitrary, to shallow gas assessment. That thirty-five percent reduction cost the county one-point-nine million dollars in revenue. And that, that reduction is still in place today. It's intended to be in place until the end of the assessment model review, which is looking to be twenty-seven, twenty-eight, somewhere in that, in that timeframe. So every one of those years, that reduction has, has been in place. So what comes out of the assessment model review is still waiting to be determined. It was based on the working group that was largely members of industry, a few members of government, and a few of us as municipalities. In another capacity, I mean, I was actually at the table for those meetings as one of the representatives, but the municipalities were really outnumbered on that. And so the work that was done as part of that group has been forward to the minister for some decisions, that the rest of the process is going to rely upon. Then the ministers changed. So Mr. Cooper was sent to Washington, Mr. MacIver was given the speaker's chair, and a new Minister of Municipal Affairs came in. So essentially, that decision hasn't been made yet on those items, because that minister has to get up to speed and, and that. But for us and any other municipality that has oil and gas facilities in it, that is a, it's a topic of concern.
Is the RMA association, are they fighting that?
Huge. So RMA-
Is that going to be addressed, you think, this, at this?
I would suspect that, I would suspect it's going to come up. The first RMA convention of a new term, there's going to be a lot of, this is what we do, these are issues, right? But there'll be some of that. So if you go into the RMA's webpage, they do have a lot of information on the assessment model review. So when I say that I was in there in, in a different capacity, up until, my term ended in August of this year, but I was a president of the Rural Administrators Association here in the province. And so we had a seat at that table. And RMA had a seat, LGA had a seat, Alberta Munis had a seat, which is the urban version of RMA. There, so we were there as municipal representatives. So the RMA was, was front and center at that, into trying to put a municipal perspective across. And you're going to see that tied in with that, the, the last one on this page, which is the unpaid oil and gas taxes. They're not the same thing, but there, there's a relationship there. So the unpaid oil and gas taxes are another huge issue for municipalities. If, again, if you go into the RMA, look at the material they've got, I think the updated numbers, there's currently two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars' worth of outstanding taxes that oil companies haven't paid to municipalities, that are owing. From Neill Counties, so it's a broad municipal issue. For us, it's important, but the work that we've done, we're actually in pretty good shape. And so we've taken a lot of proactive approaches and working with the oil companies. So where some of these municipalities are short millions of dollars in unpaid taxes, we'd have to get an update on our number, which, again, our tax deadline's coming up here in a couple of days. But, you know, we're, we're talking a hundred and, hundred, hundred-and-forty thousand. You know, we're not talking nine million, like some municipalities are. So we've done a lot of work on that front to try and get out of that. But that being said, when some of these companies go under, there's no, there's nobody to collect that tax from. So on your quick fact sheet that you've got, there's actually a number in there. So I think since 2019, the county has written off, I think, nine-point-one, nine-point-two million in uncollectible taxes. So that's taxes that were budgeted to be collected and never will be. So our practice is that basically, when those facilities, those oil and gas wells, whatever it happens to be, are transferred to the Orphan Well Association or the equivalent, the company goes under, they cease to exist, then there's nobody to actually tax for that facility, then we end up writing it off as, as something where we're just, we're never going to be able to collect, because there's literally no one to collect it from. Very occasionally, another company will come along and take an asset out of the Orphan Well Association, and then it goes back on the tax rule. But that's, so there's a, there's another issue there. Neill County, even though we've had to write off a large amount of uncollectible taxes, our current outstanding taxes has actually been fairly, is actually fairly good. We're in really good shape there, largely because of how we've chosen to work with some of the companies to, to try and have that come in. Yeah.
That's all fine and dandy, Mike, as long as we're not subsidizing the oil companies.
We're, to, to that comment, we're, we're not subsidizing oil and gas companies.
We're not subsidizing oil and gas companies with dugouts and water and stuff like that?
Sorry?
Are we not subsidizing oil companies with dugouts and water?
The, the company that has a lease on a dugout with us pays a, pays an annual amount for a rental of that, of that property. Anybody that uses water in the county is subsidized. So whether that's a farm, an acreage, if you're buying bulk water from the county, you're getting water at a subsidized rate. If you're on a county water line, which oil and gas wouldn't be, you're getting a heavily subsidized service.
So you're saying the rural pits are, unless it's the county?
Sorry?
The rural pits, the county?
The, the county has a site south of Troschu, the county has a piece of land up there, and artists rent that land from us, and they have a dugout on it that they use as a water reservoir.
Just for information, Merrell, that, that, that quarter section was taken back on taxes. And I call it the old Satella place. So I don't believe we as a council should be involved in that kind of business. I mean, there's neighbors there that would have bought that. And, but that's, that's a discussion for-
I don't supply that world for people to live off that creek for like six to eight weeks without any water. I think we have to do you, or they do you, kind of things.
Yeah.
By all means.
Will you grow, do the water?
No, the-
I'm doing the water, but you're providing a place where you're putting, it's the same stuff.
The, not necessarily in that, yeah, there, those licenses work through, work through the provincial government, but there's-
I had to water for three, two years ago. And I had to crawl through a pile of regulations. And I did, they greatly let me not have a certain amount. But I had to assure them at that point in time, that that water was still going to the end of that creek before I could take that water.
Yeah.
Are we making them do that? No. Six to eight weeks, we live with no water. And they release, Bigelow Down, guess who's pumping more before it even gets there. We have to start looking after our own everywhere.
And that's-
And I think, I think that's, I think that's what, that's what the thoughts are.
Well, I really don't, I know we don't give them a license, but we have pressure to put on these people. We're not putting the pressure on, and we're not doing-
We don't give them, yeah, we don't give them a license, but we sure give them, we sure give them a dugout. And that was, like I said, I don't, I'm not sure that's our business. So that's something that we can talk about later. Water is very important. I know where Merrell's coming from, and there, there's stuff that we have to do. Yeah, so-
In the seventies, in the seventies, I worked on drilling rigs. We were told, you know, you can't even re, use fresh water for surface holes. Now we're to the point, and there was a law in place that you cannot use fresh water for oil stimulation. Where's that gone?
It's all, it's all through the, through Alberta Environment and the AER-
Then we gotta get more active, and we should have, maybe, should have, on one of these boards, somebody going to the government and trying to change the things, not just say, oh, go ahead, do it. It's not our, I hear about all the things we should be doing, like building a tourist exhibit, but we do not look after the people that are in our community. And that's where you're going to save your community. It's not going to be doing, giving tourism, or a wedding venue, or a place like that. Look after our people first.
Counselor Hoffens?
I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Anderson. And this is a good topic to bring up at the RMA. There is an opportunity to meet or be in front of ministers and MLAs. And I've met with Mr., Minister Sigurdsson a couple of times on this matter, because I live right beside the Bigelow Down. And they have drawn water out of there way too much.
They're a little interested in that.
Yeah, he is aware of it. And I think the, our meeting here from the seventeenth to the twentieth up in Edmonton is a good place to start addressing this issue.
That's one of the things that I, I agree with. And I'm pretty sure everybody does. Water is a big thing. If we don't have water, we don't have nothing. So, and I mean, that, that's, that can come up with other deals. Like you say, we're subsidizing farmers and stuff with these bulk stations and everything. That could be. But I mean, there's, there's some places that aren't getting it too, so we're not subsidizing everybody's. That's what I, where I'm coming from. We, we should, we should have another discussion on this, like the water. And it coming up, we, we can do that, by all means. Mike?
Mature asset strategy is an initiative coming out of the premier's office. That, again, is looking at, let's, for lack of a better term, let's call it conventional development, oil and gas developments. They, they're looking at ways of increasing the viability or the sustainability of that. When that first started, municipal taxes were under the, under the sites of government. The individual who was, who was in charge of that was presented at the last CRMA meeting to, to that group. He did seem to back off on that a bit. We'll, we'll remain to see how that, what that means, or if it did. This is another one that the RMA was front and center on, in terms of trying to figure out what is going, what was going on there. For the longest time, and actually, I think still to this day, they were talking about mature asset strategies, but couldn't define a mature asset, didn't know where they were, but knew which municipalities would be most effective. So, so they said, well, that doesn't make a ton of sense. The, so again, that's one we're watching that could impact us. There is a, I believe, a property tax accountability group that between the different, whether it's AMR, mature assets, largely unpaid oil and gas, that, again, the RMA is a part of that, that's working towards, there's tie-ins to a bunch of these things, I guess. So again, they're, they're topics that can-
Are we getting dictated, are we getting dictated to by the government, or are they actually trying to work with us? Or we haven't figured it out yet?
I guess it's, I guess the answer to that question, if I'm being a bit, a bit facetious, a bit truthful, it depends if you, if you believe we have more pull with the government than oil and gas.
One of the concerns that I have is Alberta used to listen to all. They used to call them the AMD and C, not the RA, RMA's. They used to listen to the ground roots people and work with us. Now it's some, it's almost like they're dictating to us. And that's too bad.
You see a, you've seen a change with the provincial government in, in the last bit. And I'll put it this way, the, you know, if I go back to, you know, earlier in my career, I go back twenty years as an example, most of the people, it might be offside saying most, but I think most, of the individuals who are elected as, say, MLAs, or at the provincial level, cut their teeth at, on local councils. So they, that was the progression, it seemed to be, more often than not, put it that way. And so, you know, the individuals who understood these issues are there. I don't know, you know, I can't pinpoint when that switch occurred. If you went back and looked at the names and compared, you could figure it out. But, you know, the last couple of terms of the, the provincial government, and it doesn't matter which party, whether it's the NDP or the UCP, it doesn't matter anymore, those individuals more often than not are not, have not been part of a governance issue or local council. So where municipalities used, there used to be a large awareness level or understanding of municipal pressures and that, at the provincial government level, the last, the last while, that, you know, that hasn't been there. And that's not to say that none of them came from local councils, some of them did, right? But it's not like it used to be.
Counselor, can you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know one thing in the four years that I just did was learning the downloading and the control the province does have over municipalities, which is quite frustrating. But, but I just want to encourage everybody, like, we've talked about, RMA's coming up here really soon, and it is really a great avenue for that advocacy. I know many municipalities in Alberta were fighting for a seat at the table with the decisions around the AUC and renewable energy. And I think every time we go, there just seemed like it was gathering more and more steam. And they finally did listen, and they, they pumped the brakes for a little while. Is it perfect? No. But I think we said that we wanted to have a seat at the table for those decisions. So yeah, again, I just encourage everybody, get ready for RMA. You've got sixty seconds, and they cut you off. So, so make sure you, you come prepared, you ask your question, and then you, you provide more information after. But, but it really is important to do that advocacy. And, and we have seen some change happen, but it, it's not easy. But yeah, make your voice heard.
Mr. Woodstock?
I would encourage anybody that stands at the mic and asks a question, ask the same question three times in a row. Don't, no preamble, ask the same question three times in a row, because the answer you will get, they will, they will divert into a different path.
Oh, it's almost like a council meeting, or a, or a divisional meeting. Huh?
I'm not sure. But regardless of, all I'm saying is, ask the same question at least three times. Don't even bother doing a preamble. If you ask the question, and they will divert. If you ask the question, then they will divert. So just a heads up.
Mike? Okay, the other one that's going to be a big topic of 2026, that's going to eat up a bunch of our time, is a carbon viability review. So I think probably everybody's aware, the village of carbon asked the province to conduct their viability review. The province went down with basically a pre-review and said, well, do we really need to? Looked around and said, yeah, we think we need to. And so that's the process that is going to be starting now. So on November 25th, I believe it is, you're going to, municipal affairs will be here. They're scheduling about an hour to talk to council about what that process looks like, what's involved, what it means. Council can anticipate, I think, as part of that process, that you're going to see different workbooks come out. But what that really means is there's a number of questions that they're going to ask the county and saying, well, if this happened, what would the county do? So as an example, if carbon dissolved and became a hamlet, would the county maintain a satellite office in carbon? Or would that office just be shut down? Questions like that, right? How would garbage collection at the county, at the, at carbon be handled? How would da-da-da-da-da? And so there'll be, as we work through that process, that's, you'll see those things come out. The goal that, when we talked with the province a little bit ago, the goal that they have is to have the residents of carbon conduct their vote in September of 26. If they, now, the minister of municipal affairs is not bound by the outcome of that vote, but they've also never gone against one. So the, I think that's probably the simplest way of putting it. They're not bound by it, but they've also never gone against it. So if they, if carbon votes to dissolve, if they don't, then they probably get a list of things from the province that says, do this and report back and et cetera, and life goes on. If they do vote to dissolve, the times when the province generally does a dissolution is either January 1st or July 1st. So they can either start the books new from, on the calendar year or halfway through. And so when they, when they do that, there is a possibility that there'll be a vote in carbon in September, and if they vote to dissolve, they could be a hamlet as of January 1, 2027, in which case we'll have three months to work to transition and figure out how that works. They could extend it to July 1st or anything like that. So that is, we're going to be involved in that process in 2026.
Is there any thing that we can do to reject that?
Not really.
I would strongly suggest if it does come down to that, that we make it very clear that we're not in favor of this stuff anymore. These guys belong to the provincial government, they don't belong to us.
And unfortunately, as creatures...
And I know where you're coming from.
The creatures of the province, the province dictates whether...
So is the administration. You're in the process of drawing a contingency plan from the standpoint that you might very well be taking over the garbage disposal, you might very well be taking over the water system.
So as of this moment right now, no. But when I talk about the time that we're going to have to spend in 2026, it's likely a number of those things we're going to have to figure out, right? So is the, you know, garbage collection in the, in carbon as an example. Right now, we contract the town of Troschu to do garbage collection in our hamlets. Is it easy enough for us to just say, okay, there's this many more houses and the contract will increase by this much and it's, we're done, life goes on? That's one option, right? Or we look at other ways. So some of them, you know, we do some of that investigation and it may not be that difficult, but other things are going to be more complex, right? Like I said, the example that I use commonly is will you maintain a satellite office in carbon if it dissolves? So basically, the carbon office becomes a satellite office of Neale County. Residents can go in there to pay taxes, do stuff like that, yada, yada. And you have lots of options in that because it might be, yep, we're going to maintain it as it is, or might say, you know what, we don't need a full-time, we don't need it for, open full-time down there? Maybe Tuesday, Thursday afternoons is enough, right? Or nothing is an option, right? And if you do maintain it, because what we'll come back with is a minute and say, okay, if you're going to do that in carbon, what other impacts flow from that? So if you decide in carbon as an example, and I mean, it's all hypothetical if they dissolve, right? So if, I don't want people listening to think this is, you know, this is actually happening yet. But if you do decide, you know what, we're going to maintain a satellite office in carbon to allow that, we're going to say, okay, if that's the service level you're providing there, there's 500 people in a close proximity, is that the justification? Or is it something else? Because if it's something else, the county doesn't have a satellite office in Acme. You know, and not that Acme residents are ours, they're not, but the county has a population around Acme in Lyndon. And so, but we don't have a satellite office for them to go to. So is that the level of service that council wants to have in the area or not, right?
Well, and here's the scenario that it is virtual. As these towns and villages... They go out and they spend all this money, oh, sorry. They go out and spend all this money and then all of this infrastructure, the infrastructure belongs to us or comes back to us.
If they dissolve, it becomes ours, yes.
And that's not right. Because that just puts a burden on every one of the taxpayers. I've seen it in Torrington. And that was an ugly one, when that happened here. Counselor Olson?
It looks like an easy way for the government to offload debt to the county.
Big time. Big time. And I think, I think we've got to make sure that everybody, when municipal affairs come, so I think they've got to understand that.
I'm sorry, Mike, I, I thought I heard you say that the vote could, for carbon, carbon could be as early as December of 2025.
September of 2026.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the province hasn't set that date yet, but that's one of their targets. But I mean, depending on how fast they put the viability review committee together, there's stuff that could impact that, right? That's their goal, it might be later than that. All right, anything else on carbon? Okay, some upcoming projects that we have. So there's a number of infrastructure-related projects. Again, those are getting underway. What our goal is with infrastructure projects is to try to get tenders out in the fall for the upcoming construction season. So in large part, the county works on a multi-year cycle. So in year one, we like to get approvals, engineering done, all that kind of stuff in place, and in year two, actually do the construction. And so we're not planning on doing construction in a summer, and then that gets delayed because we're waiting on an Alberta Environment approval or something like that, right?
That there is, I think this is something that we need to go through line by line on these budgets and see if that's stuff that we need to actually do.
Okay. The county budget, so again, over here, there is a cycle that the county's been using the last few years. We've put a basic one in there for you. So for example, what was done in 2024. So the administration starts putting budget together in and around July, August. So we have some document to put in front of council so the council can deliberate, can look at it, ask questions, do whatever, but something makes its way to you. Those are really based on, I see what's not on here. Prior to that, we do come with guidelines and ask council, what is it you want achieved broadly in the budget? You know, do you want to maintain service levels? Do you want to do, what do you want to do here? So then we start putting it together on there. The short version, it goes through a vetting process through administration and eventually there's a document presented to council. The way we've done that the last number of years is we present the budget to you and then we give you some time to go away, look at it, digest it, that sort of thing. And when I say some time, we're really talking meeting to meeting, right? So as presented, you have that presentation and then you've got a couple of weeks to go back, look at it more, ask more, generate more questions. And we usually have one or two sessions that are really the entire purpose of them or they're taking up with just responding to those questions that council brings up. So you're saying, have a question about this. We come back as part of a presentation, say, here are the 50, 60 questions that council's asked, here are the answers to those questions. From there, council deliberates on that and eventually looks at the, some form of adoption. So this year, what we're likely looking at for the budget process is in order to get through these steps or to do that, we're thinking it's very likely we're going to end up looking to, for an interim budget because we have to have a budget in place. So if it's not the full approval of a budget, then you're looking at an interim budget, which most of the time is basically based on the prior year's budget, but in much lower amounts. So you're not approving a full year's worth of expenditures. So you're saying we're going to adopt an interim budget, which is basically last year's budget at 40% or 50%. And then in January, February, you wrap up the final version of what is going to be your budget. And so depending on how those timeframes go, we do those presentations, what questions come back, what review is done, those impact those timeframes and those timelines. The, so again, looking at what I just referred to, so that budget 2026 schedule, so looking at where we are. The one thing you'll see on this chart is the third quarter variance report. So looking, we're looking to present that on December 2nd. What that is, is a report that comes to you, if you look, if you look in past agendas, you'll see copies of them, but it's essentially the year-to-date versus budget. So what did the county budget spend? What have we actually spent year-to-date? So that'll be current as the end of the third quarter. And we have that come into the process there so that as you're doing the budget for the upcoming year, because the most common question in a lot of areas is, well, what did we spend last year in this to do what we did? And so the third quarter variance starts to tell you that story. It says, here's what we spent, you know, to date for the third quarter, which gives you an idea of what you're going to end up spending for the entire year. The, so you'll have some of that, that actual data as you go through this process as well. And so then looking at how we get into those presentations, leaving time for the presentations as well as responding to any questions that council has before council does whatever they're going to do with the budget and ultimately approves a, some form of budget. I mentioned the quarterly variance reports. So three times a year, council gets those, second, third, and fourth financial quarters. Those reports, like I said, they predict the actual revenues and expenditures related to budget. So it comes out and you'll see, if you look at past versions of it, it gives you that information in a couple of different ways. One of it is by category, so broad functions. The other way is by departments. So it'll go through the, you know, overall at the county, what did we expect to spend on materials and supplies or fuel? Here's what we've actually spent. But it also, you go a little bit further into it, it has the same breakdown, but now by department, right? So those are a couple of things it does. It also, as we go through there, is we look and saying, okay, given where we're at now, here's what we're predicting the end of the year is going to look like. Yep.
Yep, a good find and dandy, but this will be based on what we decide as a council on the direction, on where we need to go. We're not going to sit here and rubber stamp budgets. I believe that's what the problem's been. And it's one of those things that, like I say, we're going to have to have that meeting and discuss this stuff prior to all this. It all, this meeting that we're looking for will be critical for all this stuff, the budgets and everything. So just a thought, make sure you mark down your thoughts and everything on your papers here.
The audited financial statements are a requirement that all municipalities have to do. So near the end of the, near the end of the year, early in the new year, you'll meet with, you'll have the auditors come into a council meeting, they'll tell you who they are, ask you some questions, but essentially their function is to go through the municipality's financial statements. As the name implies, they audit them, they look for compliance with policies, with best practices, that sort of thing. And at the end of it, they present a report to council. Really what you're looking for is an unqualified audit that, and they're going through saying, yeah, things look, things look good, is ultimately what you're wanting to see out of the audited financial statements. If you want to look at copies of the financial statements, I've included a link in the RFD, you can go to the website. They run back for many years as to what you get from that. And again, those are, those are a mandatory thing that we have to do each year. So with those, that's again, a really high-level, really overview of a number of things that feel like there's some that, oh, I did miss one. Okay. So the other one that is read, that is, will be coming back from review and just a perk that I never talked about it, going back up the document of it is a general municipal servicing standards. So again, that is the one that outlines, that's a document that outlines when stuff gets built in the county, what's the spec or what standard is it built to? So if a developer comes in and builds a road, what is the spec of the road they have to build? What type of fire hydrant do they need to install? What type of, how big does, you know, what's the radius of the cul-de-sac need to be? It outlines all those types of things so that when we, when we have that coming in, because ultimately the municipality inherits that infrastructure, so we want to make sure that it's the, it's the appropriate stuff or it's the right things. We don't want to get a, you know, somebody comes in and builds a cul-de-sac and it's not big enough for a school bus to turn around. Or we don't need, you know, down to the point of we're saying, if you're developing in a hamlet or something like that, we use this type of fire hydrant so that the fire departments don't have to have 14 different keys or tools to get, figure out which one they need for that particular hydrant, right? So there is a, or water source, whatever we happen to be using, if that's a dry, anything like that. But there is a, that's what the general municipal servicing standards outline. So if you're going to build something that the county's eventually going to inherit, this is what you need to build. And so that's the servicing standards that we have. So that one is slated for review as well. Review and update. So, sorry, I missed that one on the way through, but... And as I said, that's the high-level overview of a number of the key or pertinent documents, projects, things like that in the municipality at the time. Go onto that repository, there's far more policies than would have been outlined here and other information that's out there as well, but this is giving a start.
Just a question for administration, do we need a motion for this?
So there's, so there's a question for, so this is a new, a new process. So one of the things we went through when we did the governance model, and this was based on some training that was done around, well, we brought in a parliamentarian to do some training around council processes. In the past, if you look at a lot of the meetings, what you would have seen is when we have an item like this, the council, somebody makes a motion to accept for information. The question that arises on that is what if the vote is no? And it's never no, but what if it is? Is, I should say, it's never been no, because the information was presented, right? So what are the recommendations that we chose to adopt, starting with the new term, was council has the ability through basically unanimous consent to acknowledge receipt of this is information. And so what that, it's a little bit different because you don't require a motion. But say, okay, council will acknowledge this as having been received for information. If somebody wants to do something with that, then you actually need a motion because you've got a tangible action that you want to undertake, right? But if it's really just, okay, you've presented this, we heard it, and now we're moving on to the next thing, then if nobody ejects, you can acknowledge that as received. That's what we'll note in the minutes, council acknowledged receipt of the report on this and we're moving on.
You heard what we need to do.
Acknowledge the receipt.
I agree. Everybody in agreement with that? Acknowledgement of receipt. Counsel and committee reports. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. Okay, so I'll try to be quick here. Just to wrap up, Neale Housing, we met on October 15th and I will make sure the final minutes are to council and to administration. Just a quick overview, of course, some of you knew we were in the process of hiring a new CAO. We kind of pumped the brakes on that a little bit because we wanted the new board members to have a seat at the table at that. So that will be first item on agenda for the new Neale Housing Board. So just wanted to quickly mention...
So just wanted to quickly mention, October 22nd, I attended the RCMP firefighters' battle of the Badges Hockey Game in Three Hills. Very well-attended, very entertaining, got a little heated a little bit, which was really entertaining. Just a really great event in support of Neale Kids Sport. I don't know if we have a total of what they raised, but just even from the 50/50, it was really great, so look forward to that. If you're ever looking for someone to do a little bit of cheerleading for you, Amber with our Peace Officer Department, she was amazing. And we had Ming and Deb there as well, so just really appreciated our staff involvement. And of course, huge thank you to the RCMP and our firefighters for what they did that night, and of course, for everything they do, continuous for all of us, for taking care of us. And just one more quick one, October 23rd, Three Hills District Chamber Commerce held their Small Business Awards. And I just want to pass on thank you to Neale County for having Ms. Kester and Ms. Gobright there. It was really excellent to have them there, and they did a really great job of highlighting the Neale County businesses that were recognized, and also some of our Neale County residents that do have businesses in some urban. So just quickly, the ones from Neale County that were recognized were 4K Farms, Kelsey Tulikoff with Three Hills Dental, Amanda Kinnenberg with Neale Housing, Alanta Physio, which is Jordana Ferguson, Lively Massage Zoe Newfeld, and Melissa Wallendike, who is with the Three Hills Library. So again, just a great event, and thanks to the Neale County staff that attended. And just, I think Ms. Vanderkoen maybe mentioned it earlier, but Flap Jack Fiesta in Trosu tomorrow at the community center at 5:00.
Anybody got any questions? Oh, sorry, Mike?
If council wants, I can. So what you'll see on every agenda, or on every regular council meeting, this occurs. And so what this is, is essentially a list of the motions that council's made in the past, and where the status of those decisions are. So this is the reporting back mechanism for council's decisions. So when you have a motion, you say, this is what's going to happen. It gets put on here, so that you can see the status of that at upcoming meetings. So this is a reporting accountability function. One of the things about the list here, some of these sit on here for a while, because we're waiting on other parties. So as an example, I don't know that there's one on there right now for the perk credit. So I talked about unpaid oil and gas taxes as an example. So even when, say, an oil and gas company doesn't pay its taxes, we are still required to submit the education tax to the province based on that assessment. So even though we didn't collect it, we still have to submit it. There is a couple of programs that exist at the province, perk and dirk, sounds ridiculous when you say it like that, but there is a, that basically we can apply to be credited the amount of those education taxes. This requires a council motion, but when we make it, we don't, the applications are once a year. So if you make that motion in the fall, it's going to sit there for three or four months before we can make the application to do that. And so that's where the notes and stuff came in, where we're saying this, or, you know, this one's going to sit here for a while, because we're waiting on another party to do a thing, or we're waiting on Alberta Environment to approve something, right? As we go through there. But that's really what it is. And the way that you'll see it function is, you see who's responsible, the expected timeline for it, but then you get into, if you see the ones that are marked complete, those are ones that have been completed. You'll see them marked complete once, and then they disappear from the list. And so you have that, seeing that, okay, they've been complete, and now you don't see them again, because they're complete.
Counselor Whitstock?
Sorry, I just wanted to step back one step. Did we make a motion to accept the council and committee reports as presented? If, okay, I would make that motion?
Excuse me? Oh, Mike?
I'll interject there, that is one of the ones we can apply the new process to as well.
Okay.
So as long as the, it's a good catch, because we didn't do that either. But there is a, again, in past, we've always accepted that as a motion to accept for information. But again, it's not really a motion you can vote no to, so why are you making the motion, right? So again, that's another candidate for, the reports were made, you can acknowledge receipt as long as everyone's good with that, you have unanimous consent, we noted in the minutes, and you're moving on.
I apologize.
Hey, no worries. We need to be caught on a lot of that stuff. Another question. This is why we have to address some of our concerns right away, too, because we can get some of this stuff right off your list here, right away. So I think, I've got marked up in concerns that we need to talk about, probably Thursday, Friday on some of this stuff, too, that we can address, so. Just for information?
If there's no questions, then again, the report's been submitted to you. Again, if you have any unanimous consent, then you can acknowledge that, and then you're moving on.
We need no motion. You guys good with it? Okay. Unanimous consent. Done. We don't need a motion to end council? We have a motion for that?
So before council does that, there is a, I will say, I know that we're, it's been a long day, and we're coming up on four, so there is an option here. The closed session item are just briefings on things, there's nothing actionable that you need to do in there. So it's your choice of whether you want to do that today, or I could bring that back November 12th without much of an issue, too. So up to council.
Do you have an idea of what timeline you need to present that to us?
I think I could go through it fairly quickly, it all depends on the questions that come up from.
Right now? Right now?
Okay. So then what we'd need, you'd need a motion to go into closed session?
I'm sorry, I'm not good on these things, but I move that we go into closed session to discuss the issue.
So the motion would refer privileged information? Yeah.
All, is that, that's going to be voted on? All in favor? Very unanimous?
So while we're doing that, so in closed session, so what you'll see here, we're still using a microphone and some things like that, but the feed is cut. And so that, that's closed session. The only motion that you can make in closed session, oh, sorry, yeah. The only motion that you can make in closed session is to come out of closed session. So if you make a, if there's a motion that you're going to need to make out of closed session, you have to wait till you're in open session to make that motion. And so you can decide, what's the motion? You discuss a topic, or you decide-